Good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meetings to order this morning on May 23rd at 9:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison Terry to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Joshua Elizondo.
Present.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolina Grande.
Here.
Cam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry LeGrand.
Here.
Paul Medina.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Los Villa Lobos.
Present.
Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have quorum President Costa.
Thank you so much. With that, I'd like to ask my colleague Board Member Grande to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Take your right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, is there any discussion on the order of the agenda? Seeing none, we will keep the published agenda. With that, it's time for my report. As you know, I like to be brief. All I'll say is, I'm sure many of you saw the press coverage recently about the huge milestone that Calbright recently reached, which is an enrollment of a little over 2,000 students. As somebody who was there at the ground floor of this idea, it's truly remarkable and amazing that this idea that was had when the state actually was in very good economic times, but the recognition that there were many Californians that needed a different path, a different way to earn more money and to get more, what I would call, career velocity, on the ability to really kind of have career gains that recognize that many people work, many people have families, and a traditional academic calendar simply wouldn't work. So anyway, I'm incredibly proud of our staff. They have really been through it, and I think, you know, we often don't think about how difficult it is to actually literally start from pretty much a blank page and really create a whole new system of higher education, something that I know without a doubt will be a model nationwide. And so I just want to thank the Calbright staff. I want to thank our students for placing their faith and their trust in us on what was really a new model. And with that, I'll turn it over to our president.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. I wanted to actually begin by thanking trustee Elizondo, whose term on the board comes to an end later this month. Just on behalf of Calbright, I wanted to extend my gratitude for your insight and perspective, but really your steadfast commitment to students all across the state of California. It's been a true joy to have you on the board, and we're so appreciative of your service. I recently had the opportunity to travel to Washington, DC to meet with a number of leaders at the federal level who are very interested in Calbright and our role as the leading edge of the learning curve, specifically for adult learners. Something I found myself saying frequently, as I outlined our progress, was that we were finally starting to see the impact of practices and initiatives that we implemented a year ago, or 18 months ago. The Chronicle of Higher Education actually recently took note of this. They noted that we're a college that's really hitting our stride. And while that's absolutely true, what I think it's really important and equally critical to recognize is that this is the kind of thing that doesn't happen overnight. It's the product of months and months of cumulative consistency, of identifying areas of improvement, of testing different solutions, and then using data and observations to scale, to implement scalable systems. So yes, we have grown enrollments, and that's exciting, but that's the result of actually building an accessible model. Yes, we have improved our persistence rates, and they've stabilized in the mid-90s, but that is the outcome of putting our students and their needs at the center of every decision we make and prioritizing holistic student support endeavors. Yes, a third of our students are parents, but that is a natural progression when a college provides the rigor of higher education, but actually removes all of the logistical hurdles. I saw this firsthand in Oakland at the launch of our apprenticeship program with Bitwise Industries. One of the graduates participating in the program, her name is Esha. She has children who are at home and expressly chose Calbright because it was the only model that was feasible in her variable schedule. Another one of the apprentices, Paige, shared that it was our flexible pacing that was critical to her, largely because her work schedule was too unpredictable to attend a traditional institution. Today, you'll hear about many of the improvements we've made as a part of our growth, and in our discussion about the development of our next strategic vision, we'll advance the conversation about where we're heading in the years ahead. At every step, we have kept and will continue to keep students like Paige and Esha at the center of our design. And while it's unfortunate that this perspective isn't standard operating procedure up and down higher education, recent media coverage is taking note of our accomplishments and also of our unique orientation. We've heard, we're hearing from entities near and far, asking us how we're growing enrollments and also how we're keeping more students than ever, asking us how we're building programs that are connected to opportunities in the labor market, and also how we're supporting the whole student. Our position as a statewide catalyst for workforce development is a key ingredient in a thriving California. And as we approach what would be the end of another academic year at a traditional institution, we have much to be proud of. To quote a recent CalMatters headline, "Calbright Star Is Certainly Rising." Thank you, President Costa, and members of the board. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much, as always. The board will now move into our closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. One, public employee performance evaluation of the president and chief executive officer, and two, public employment vice president of Student Services and Success. Is there any public comment on our closed session items?
President Costa, there is no public comment.
Thank you. We expect we'll be in closed session for around 30 minutes. We will see you when we return. Thanks. Thank you. Good morning. The board is back from closed session, and we did not take any action in closed session. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda, section three of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I move approval.
If Haynes. I would like to second it.
And Grande is the second. Thank you so much. Will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. We're going to move on to section four of the agenda, the action portion, and we'll start with item 4.1, Report on Audit of Financial Statements, Reports on Compliance and Governance Letter. I think you need to turn on your mic, Ange.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of Board of Trustees. I believe Heather McGee of CLA will be present shortly to discuss the results of the audit report for the period ending June 30th, 2022. I'm online, Ange. Great, Heather. So let me go ahead and share my screen real quick. Okay, very good. Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me join you online today to discuss the results of your financial audit. I have a PowerPoint presentation prepared, and at any point, you know, please let me know if you have any questions. So, again, my name is Heather McGee. I'm the signing director, and what that means is I am the partner responsible for the project, and I actually signed the audit report. So let me share with you. Okay, so the components of the audit report. So the main reason why you have an audit performed is so that somebody not associated with the organization can give their opinion on the financial statements. So the first page I want to point you to is the Independent Auditors Report, and that's immediately following the Table of Contents. So the Independent Auditor's Report, the key language that you're looking for is presented fairly in material respects. And what that means is that the district has received an unmodified opinion. Another thing to point out to you is that the report is dated March 23rd, 2023, which is a couple of months past the December 31st deadline. So we did work with the chancellor's office. There were some vacancies and turnover, not only on the Calbright side, but as well as Clifton, Larson, Allen's side. So again, we did work with the chancellor's office, and we made sure that we kept in communication with them to let them know the status of that report. Following the Independent Auditor's Report is the Management Discussion and Analysis. So this is management's opportunity to talk about, you know, on a comparative basis, what's going on with the organization. So this is a great resource, or section of the financial statements, to kind of brag about what's occurred throughout the year. The MDNA, as it's referred to as, does provide, excuse me, a comparative of three years. So if you're to look at last year's report, it only compared two years, and I just want to point out the reason for that. So the accreditation committee, or accreditation group that the college belongs to, does require that the financial statements be prepared on a comparative basis. So we have incorporated that into the financial statements this year, and you'll see that in the financial statements as we go through. But the MDNA, when you have comparative, it does actually show three years of financial information. And as far as the components to the financial statements, you actually have three statements in your financial report. There's a statement of net position, a statement of revenue and expenses and changes in net position, and statement of cash flows. And I have snippets of each of those sections that I'll go through briefly with you. So the first section is a statement of net position. Just for size-wise, in putting in the presentation, what I'm showing right now is just the assets. So the assets, you'll see your biggest asset consists of cash and cash equivalents, and total assets is 85.7, of which cash is 81.3. There's some additional line items added to the financial statements that are different than the internal reporting or what you actually report to the chancellor's office. The internal reporting is referred to as modified cash basis, where your financial statements are full accrual basis. So there's a couple of additional line items on your financial statements that aren't in your internal financials, and that's typical for California community college districts. And some of those line items, what they include is capital assets, as well as the deferred outflow of pension. And we're going to talk a little bit more about those pension costs, because that's something new to the district, as well as new to your financial statements. The liabilities portion of the financial statements, this is what you think of what is owed to others when you're looking at the financial statements. Again, looking at it, your largest liability consists of the pension liability, again, a new line item. You can see the comparative format that that amount is zero. And the reason for that is the measurement is two years in arrears. So since the district is getting established, they've bought into participation in the STIRS and PERS pension plans. This is the year that those got recorded in the financial statements. So again, just pointing out what's a little different from the internal reporting, as well as the external reporting. But overall, the ending net position of the district is 72.5 million, of which 71.4 million is for restricted purposes. And those would be programmatic. The statement of revenue and expenses and changes in net position, so those of you who have had the accounting classes, this is your income statement. So this is a snapshot of what revenue was received throughout the year, as well as what was paid out. So the district does receive an allocation from the state of $15 million. So you'll see that in the non-operating revenue, and that is consistent with other community college districts or governmental agencies, because it's not an exchange transaction. Currently, the college is still operating as not charging tuition and fees, which would be the operating portion for the college had you charged those. Operating expenses, your largest expense consists of salaries and benefits. And you'll notice on this page, there's a big increase in employee benefits. So we keep talking about the pension liability and how we've applied that to the financial statements. That represents the STIRS and PERS liability is the reason for that big jump. But we'll see that kind of balance out next year. There's a lot of moving factors in that equation, including, you know, investment earnings, as well as who's participating in the program. But overall, the organization has a net decrease of 12.4 million. Again, the biggest piece of that is approximately 9 million associated with the STIRS and PERS net pension liability. And then statement of cash flow, the last statement in your financials. This is, I like to refer to this as a screenshot of what, on a cash basis, what does the organization look like. So you can see throughout the year, there's been a net decrease in cash in $3.2 million, and that really is just the timing difference of when apportionment, or the apportionment allocation is received, as well as payments out to suppliers, as well as employees. So following the financial statements is the footnote disclosure portion of the financials. So I like to refer to the notes as a financial statement, as your financial statements would not be complete without these footnote disclosures. Gives a little bit more insight into the college, as well as certain key amounts. We have added the STIRS and PERS net pension liability, and it takes up multiple pages, which tells you the complexity of this liability. In addition, there's some required supplementary information, and that, again, has to do with the STIRS and PERS disclosures. Throughout, as we look through the financials, those disclosures are going to grow. It's going to be, end up being a 10-year trend that will be included in the financial statements. And then other auditor reports, those include what's required by Yellow Book as a governmental agency, as well as a state letter. The chancellor's office does issue the contracted district audit manual, and there are certain compliance steps that auditors are required to perform for Calbright. That just includes the 50% law and the GAM limit at this time. And then lastly, there is the finding and question cost section. So there is a continuation of a finding related to the 50% law, and we've talked with management extensively, as well as continue to include it in our presentation. Calbright is still in its infancy, and it's going to take a while for Calbright to get to that level where 50% of their expenditures consist of payments to faculty members and benefits. However, compliance-wise, it's considered out of compliance, but there's no financial impact at this time. Again, the Calbright does receive an allocation, not apportionment, so it's a little bit different. And it's just a continued finding until it grows to the amount that you're in compliance. So I kind of gave a little bit of preview as to the other highlights. So again, the major changes in your financial statements this year is that now it's presented in a comparative format. The liability disclosures, including the required supplemental information related to CalSTIRS and CalPERS, which Ange has also prepared a presentation that he's going to follow with me to give you a little bit more insight into that. And then the finding section, which we talked about 50% loss. So there's definitely two types of findings that you can receive. There are none for the financial statements, and then there's just the one state compliance finding. And in addition to the financial statements, we do issue what's referred to as a governance letter. So this is required by our professional standards. It kind of summarizes certain information. If there's any significant estimates in the financial statements, which of course, you know, the liability for STIRS and PERS is a large estimate, including input from an actuary. If there's any sensitive financial disclosures, and if we have any difficulties in accounting and performing the audit. So the report is delayed, so there is a paragraph in there referring to the turnover and vacancies. You know, these are key positions, and the individuals that are in place now have been very responsive. But the turnover before, you know, they were in place, did delay the audit a little bit. Disagreement with management, there are no disagreements. However, we did include some additional suggestions. They didn't reach the level of needing to be considered a finding in the financial statements. But we have some recommendations regarding closing procedures and the grants accounting. As the college continues to get new grants, it's important to establish procedures for monitoring those grants and reporting the revenue when that revenue is earned. There were three audit adjustments that have been applied to the financial statements, two of which do have to do with that grants accounting that I'm referring to. And the other one has to do with inventory. So again, all adjustments that would be caught in the closing procedures. And then uncorrected misstatements, auditors do have the benefit in coming in after closing and looking at the books. So there are some smaller amounts that were identified as errors, but they're not large enough to meet the requirements of needing to be presented in the financial statements or applied to the financial statements. They're just included in that letter for management's consideration, so that when they do set up their closing procedures, they can look at those and see how they can catch those adjustments in the closing process for next year. So those were the highlights that I wanted to point out to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has for me.
Colleagues, any questions or comments for the presenters? Not seeing any, but that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. I will entertain a motion in a second.
This is Member Grande. I move approval.
Great, great. Will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Epstein.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Jolina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have item 4.2, the Calbright College Holiday Schedule Resolution.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. This item seeks board approval of resolution number 2023-02, revising the holiday schedule for Calbright College. The board previously approved providing the day after Thanksgiving and the day before Christmas, the two additional holidays for classified employees, when you approved their collective bargaining agreement on March 21st, 2023. The bargaining agreement granted those holidays for our classified employees, and what we're doing is asking to bring the college calendar in alignment with those holidays as well.
Great, thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. I have Haynes with a motion. Who has a second?
Second.
Elizondo with a second. With that, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you. Our next and last action item is 4.3, Vice President of Student Services and Success.
Right, thank you. Again, I'm bringing forward a candidate, Dawn Orth, for your consideration as the Vice President of Student Services and Success. Dawn is a veteran educator and administrator who's worked in the K-12 schools around the world with a focus on reimagining education. During that time, he also led research on relationships between agile learning spaces and mobile technology. Most recently, he's spent the past 10 years at Apple, heading their Worldwide Education Leadership Program, developing their strategy for helping education decision-makers in government K-12 and higher education transform learning and teaching. He also has led cross-functional teams to explore new solutions for well-being, inclusion, diversity, and community engagement. He's practiced design thinking and human-centered design, and spent years leading teams through solution development. And this includes creating a new professional development platform for teachers. He has authored several leadership books and white papers, including Elements of Leadership and Innovation in Schools, and led a 2019 Gallup study on creativity and learning. He holds his Master's in Education from Harvard's Graduate School of Education, a Master's in Fine Arts from Vermont College, a Bachelor's in English from Tufts University, and he was recognized as an Apple Distinguished Educator in 2011. He and his wife and young daughter live in the Bay Area, and his two older children have graduated from UC Davis and UCLA, and we're very excited to bring him forward for candidacy.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item? Any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I move.
I'll second.
Epstein and Rawlings. With that, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Josh Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Solis.
Aye.
Jolina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Thank you. Welcome to Dawn. We look forward to working with you. Next, we're into Information and Reports, section five of the agenda, and we'll start with item 5.1, the 2024-2027 Strategic Vision Process and Timeline. Nope, your mic's not on.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and trustees of the board. As some of you may recall, in September 2020, Calbright College partnered with an outside consulting firm to co-develop its first strategic vision. Along with utilizing focus groups, surveys, and in-depth research, the Board of Trustees was thoroughly engaged in this process with regular discussions, opportunity for public comment, and an in-depth work session with the full board. This process focused on identifying, clarifying, and conveying the college's direction, development, and scale from 2021 through 2023. The 2021 through 2023 strategic vision, which the Calbright Board of Trustees approved in the spring of 2021, focused on building a successful and practical foundation for the college and providing key milestones that have served as a roadmap towards developing a sustainable institution. With the 2021-2023 strategic vision sunsetting at the end of 2023, this past December, we began our search for a consulting firm to lead us through the development of our next Calbright 2024 through 2027 strategic vision. I am excited today to announce that we have found that partner this past March in People Rocket. Of course, we're also excited to collaborate with this multidisciplinary global team with expertise in utilizing human-centered co-design strategies that truly capture and ground the voices and vision of those they work with into innovative and equitable projects. Today, we have two of those members with us today from People Rocket, Mike and Ari. Michael Temblador is the Associate Principal Designer directly to my right. Mike is a designer, educator and facilitator with years of experience guiding nonprofits and organizations through strategic planning and DEI strategies. And Ari Kurtz is the Senior Principal Designer. Ari is an executive leadership team member at People Rocket. Ari's professional expertise and experience includes consulting with organizations of all types and sizes, ranging from federal government agencies like the IRS and National Public Service to nonprofits, startups and Fortune 50 clients. Mike and Ari will walk us through the process and timeline for the Calbright 2024 through 2027 strategic vision. And although Mike and Ari will also allow time for questions at the end, please consider this presentation conversational. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Mike and Ari. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, thank you so much for having us here. We're delighted at the opportunity to talk to you about the 2024 to 2027 strategic vision process for Calbright College. So Carmen mentioned that we are a design-thinking, human-centered, design-focused consulting firm. And if we can go to the next slide, or actually two slides down, a little bit about us. We work with leaders and teams from growth-oriented organizations and impact-focused organizations to help them solve their most challenging and complex problems. And that covers a range of organizations from startups to nonprofits to Fortune 500. So we've really worked across the board on all kinds of strategic challenges with a large number of organizations. If we can go to the next slide, please. So the team members, you got a little bit of an introduction to Michael and me. We have another team member in Atlanta named Marius Jackson. Marius's background is in both strategy and industrial design. And he is a very talented visual designer as well. So a lot of the beautiful visual representations of our concepts and work you'll see as the project progresses. So I think you'll be delighted with what he has to offer and we're all very excited to be working with you. Next slide, please. So a little bit about how we work together, and then next slide, please. Thank you. So first of all, we practice what we call co-design and co-design really is about collaboration. It means we don't design for you, we design with you. And this, we think, is very important. First of all, great ideas can come from anywhere. We're not the only ones with great ideas. You, your staff, your stakeholders all across the board are going to be really important and are important in the process. And we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So number one, we design with and not for you. Number two, we know that there are many possible futures. So we obviously can't predict the future, but what we want to do is come up with as many scenarios and possible futures as we can imagine and as we can think about and try to build a plan that's flexible and that's going to cover as many of those scenarios as we can. So imagine many possible futures. Number three, test it before you suggest it. So we also believe in prototyping. And in this case, what that means is instead of just designing and building solutions, we're going to, all along the way, take those thoughts and solutions to you, to the Calbright team, to all the stakeholders. And we're going to get feedback on those as we go. And we will iterate on those potential solutions as we gather that feedback. So instead of going from zero to 100, we're going to go from zero to 10 and get some feedback and 10 to 20 and get some feedback and so forth and so on. So test it before we suggest it. Number four, measure what matters. Obviously, I think we all know that, you know, what gets measured is what gets focused on. And in this case, we also want to make sure that what gets measured is the correct, are the correct things. So we want to think about what those goals and priorities are and make sure that the measurement that we design is actually going to drive the right outcomes and the right behaviors. So measure what matters. And then fifth, finally, iterate always. So we believe that nothing is static. We obviously, again, can't predict the future. We don't know what's coming. And we want to build a plan that focuses on iterative processes and gives us the opportunity to iterate on iterate on the actions that we're going to take as a result of what we've designed. Okay, next slide, please. So diving in a little bit then to this first idea, design with and not for, that we co-design with our stakeholders. The way that we do that is that we form a core team and you can see that in the middle of the diagram here. So Calbright and People Rocket have a core team that we call the Design Team that meets regularly and really focuses on kind of the day-to-day building of the plan. But that core team is augmented by the full brain trust of both organizations. So all of People Rocket in the background, all of Calbright in the background, really working together. And then finally, even outside of that, all of the Calbright stakeholders are brought into the process as well. And so this team works throughout the entire strategic visioning process to build the vision together. Okay, next slide, please, and I will, I'll pause there in case there are any questions. And if not, we will move on. Any questions? Okay, so I'll turn it over to my colleague, Michael, to take us through a little bit more of the detail.
Great. So I'm going to just kind of walk you through what the process is going to look like from beginning to end. And we'll pause for questions at the end as well for that. So if you go to the next slide, please. So what you're looking at right now is a big picture of our timeline. And so we like to really break our strategic visioning process into three phases. The first is Phase One, which is insights and interactions. And this is really trying to achieve two things here. We're going to deep dive in the Calbright community, build connections, build relationships, get an understanding of the ecosystem. And then we're also going to start doing some research, talking to people. And in the next slide, I'll go more in-depth on what that looks like. Phase Two is my favorite phase. We call it ideas and inspirations. And so this is when we get to start being really creative and innovative and co-designing the plan. We reflect on the insights we learned from the previous phase and then we start envisioning what a new future might look like. And then the last one is impact implementation. And that's when we start synthesizing and reimagining what the future can be and start prioritizing and narrowing these big ideas from the previous phase into more concrete tactical strategies. And then the last thing we do that is a little bit unique is we spend some time understanding what are the impact of these potential strategies? What, like, we have all these great ideas, what are the possible negative consequences and positive consequences from those ideas? And so, in just a moment, in the next slide, I'll go in-depth on what these phases really look like. So if you go to the next slide, please. Great. So Phase One, which is interactions and insights, some of these things we've already done already. So we've held a kickoff meeting with the executive team where we did some stakeholder mapping. We lined on outcomes and did some reflection on the previous strategic vision. And currently, we're in our research phase. So we're conducting qualitative interviews, environmental scans, landscape analysis, doing research, talking to a lot of people, and then soon we'll start doing our focus groups. We'll be talking to students and some other, some other state agencies. There we go. And then the final phases, we'll start collecting those insights into greater themes and we'll share them back with you all to give you insight into what we've learned through all these talkings, through all this research that we've done. And then finally, we're going to create a document for you all to review and look through the synthesis and the insights we collected. And then in this phase, we're actually going to have a touch point with the Executive Committee on June 21, the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on June 21. If you go to the next slide, sorry. You see control of the slides. So some of the things you can expect by the end of this phase is we're going to conduct our research in a SWOT analysis and a landscape analysis to find a shared understanding of Calbright's position with a competency-based education and online educational space and provide context and serve as a resource of best practices to support the visioning process. Next slide. So Phase Two, this is the most interactive phase. And so this is really where we start engaging in workshops. And you'll see there's an overlap in the timeline and that's intentional. We don't have to wait for all the research to be synthesized. We can start our co-design process even before we're done researching. And so we're actually conducting our first workshop tomorrow with the executive team. And then from there, there'll be two more co-designed workshops. And from that, that'll be enough co-designed to start putting together the first draft of the strategic vision framework. And so we'll start, we're going to prototype as we go and you'll get a chance to kind of see the development of the vision as we go. And then from there, we'll get feedback, iterate, and then we'll have another co-designed workshop to take those learnings and go back to the plan and sort some of those things out. And next slide, please. And so here you'll really get a strategic vision, which may include a vision, mission, principles, priorities, goals, strategies and tactics, as well as an executive summary as well. And you all will be briefed in the August meeting for that. Next slide. And the final phase is the impact and implementation. And so this is when we start narrowing down and start getting down to the nitty-gritty, taking, we'll continue to draft it, continue to iterate on the process. And then we'll draft the final strategic vision and then from there, we're going to develop an action plan. And that's really an accountability for who's measuring what, who's accountable for what. And we'll co-design that with you all, make sure that the metrics everyone's accounted for and has responsibilities. And then finally, we're going to support with some rollout, kind of communicating the strategic vision to the necessary parties at an ongoing basis. And then next slide. Next slide. There we go. And so at this point, you'll have the final strategic vision and executive summary, an action plan and rollout of deliverables and support of the action plan. And so, yep, that'll be kind of the end of the engagement. If you want to go to the next slide. Any questions about the timeline presented? Great.
It's fast.
It's fast.
It's a fast timeline. Is that intentional?
Um, I think it is intentional. I mean, I think this is actually a longer one than I'm actually used to. So we're used to working pretty quickly. So what I will say is there is some good, some innovation, some speed kind of creates some innovation. And so oftentimes, we like to kind of put people, get their initial insights out on the table. And so I think that being quick can be good.
I'll add to that, that if we felt like at any point we weren't going to get what we needed or didn't have what we needed, we would share that with the executive team and make sure that we compensate for that.
Yep. Great.
So, um, so that we won't be given a letter grade for our ability to be innovative, right?
Absolutely not. There's no judgment here.
Okay.
We're here to support you with that, not value you on that. Uh, next slide. Oh, okay. So here's what we've kind of done so far, just to give you an update on how it's going so far. So like I said before, we had our strategic vision kickoff meeting on March 15th, got to meet the executive team and start doing some, some beginning planning mappings, just helping us get familiar with the community. And then we've been having weekly core team meetings with a small team of Calbright team members where we're really making decisions. In the beginning, it really is a lot of logistics work, understanding ways of working for you all and understanding the ways of working for us to really get aligned, to make sure we can be on the same page and be one team. Uh, next slide. So here's what's coming up next. Next slide. Do less barrier slides next time. So Ari was kind of alluding to this. And so we apply something called the spiral design process to our work. And so really what it is, is a prototyping approach where we're going to, we have a strategic vision framework that we have right now and that will iterate that as we go. And so basically, what it looks like is there's a vision, mission, value, our values or priorities kind of feed into the goals and priorities for, I'm sorry, vision, mission, principles feed into the goals and priorities of the organization and those trickle down into tactics and strategies. And then underneath that is a measurement structure to see how are we moving the plan forward? And that'll all feed into the action plan. And so this is like, like I said, this could change very much throughout the process. We come in here and we'll iterate and we'll build this out together. And the point is that we can just share along the way. And you can even see there's some parts of Calbright already in here, right? Like the mission is already on this slide. And so what might happen is we start getting really into the goal and strategy process, be like, oh, we might need to revisit the mission and then we'll revisit. So we'll continuously ground ourselves in the vision and mission as we continuously build out the plan. And that's intentional to make sure that we are being informed by the aspirational direction and the things that you really need and have to achieve for the next four years. Next slide. And so what's coming up is, like I said before, the co-design workshop tomorrow, we're really excited to take that on with the team. And then our research synthesis, and then finally, the co-design workshop too, which will be June 21st. We'll be with just the Board of Trustees Executive Committee. We'll be doing a co-design workshop with a subset of you all as well. Great. I believe that is it. Or it is. So yeah, we'll pause for any other questions.
So much for your presentation, colleagues. Any questions or comments for the presenters?
Not for the presenters. What's the expectation of the non-executive committee members in this process? Are we expected to be available for these things or is it just for the executive team?
I'll let you speak to it, but if you look, I have the same question, Joseph. On the timeline slides, there are specific points where they'll come to the full board. And so the executive committee will have a couple more touch points, but ultimately, the board will be engaged as well. Well, I will say, for instance, and Carmen to speak to this, for June, we're trying to find a place where we can all be together to facilitate it, but it's part of our regularly scheduled board meeting, Carmen.
Yes, that's correct. Good morning. It will be a part of the regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meetings for the full board. With the exception in June, for the co-design workshop, we're going to have it directly after the executive committee meeting, but it will be on the same day.
This is just in tandem to Member Williams' questions. Where is the faculty and student in these?
They will be involved in the co-design workshops as well. So we will have various representation from the constituency groups, as well as from some of our collaborative, like JustBE groups that we have within the institution, representatives from CFA, CSEA, et cetera, as well.
And we'll also be using student surveys to inform the plan as well as a student leader focus group as well. Yep. So we're going to try to bring them different touch points in the process.
So they're not involved in the focus group, but more the co-design, where you saw the co-design portion. And we'll have students in the focus groups.
One just logistic thing is, as we nail down the dates to trustee Williams, it'd be important for us to get a comprehensive schedule to the board so that they can plan accordingly, like kind of have a routine of Community College Board, Calbright. So we may need a little bit more of your time, so we'll make sure and get out a comprehensive calendar to all Board of Trustee members as well. With that, any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great.
Wanted to highlight, just I hope you all are as excited as, as we are in college to dive into this.
I shared, I've got. Well, thank you so much. I'm sure we'll see much more of you in the coming months. Thank you. Next up, we have standing item 5.2, Reports on Contracts and Purchases.
Good morning again, President.
Good morning again, um, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of the Board of Trustees. For the month of April, we had eight contracts that amounted to approximately eight hundred ninety seven thousand four hundred sixty-four. And we had total purchases of approximately two hundred forty-three thousand five hundred twenty-nine. Any questions?
Colleagues, any questions on this item? I have board member Salas followed by board member Grande.
Yeah, I was looking at the amount for the Sacramento advocates of ten thousand dollars a month. Is that, is that a little high?
Um, I will say, wearing my professional hat as a lobbyist, it's standard rate right now.
We're in the wrong profession.
I.
Some are actually higher than that. We remember Sal's.
Having employed lobbyists for many years in my prior job, we used to pay twenty thousand a month.
Yeah. It, it depends on the, i- isn't it better to do an hourly rate?
I'm just speaking from personal experience here and others can weigh in, but, um, most of them are on a retainer basis.
Okay, thank you.
For member Grande.
I was just wondering about the, um, I guess it would be considered the contract extension for teaching assigned disciplines. At, at what point in time will our adjuncts fill this role?
Great question. Thank you, Member Grande. Um, w- we are actually in the process of setting up, uh, a, a very comprehensive program for adjuncts that we hope to kick off in the new fiscal year. Um, so, uh, our Dr. McCarty, who leads our learning and instruction work is, uh, primary at the helm of that. She's done this in a couple of other institutions to date. So, um, we'll have more to share about that. Um, and so we're, we're hoping that, um, gets started, I want to say in July or August is the, is the timeframe we're anticipating.
Great. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great. Thank you so much. We have our last information and report item in five point three, which is an update on Calbright's progress to fulfill California State Auditor recommendations.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo. Uh, my name is Brendan O'Callahan, Vice President of Marketing Communications here at Calbright. Um, so the good news, the short, short answer is we're, we're making, uh, we continue to make progress against the California State Audit and, uh, continue to implement, uh, all the recommendations, uh, provided by the auditor. But I want to spend all the time, uh, getting into some of those details, uh, in a more granular fashion here. Um, so if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, so for background, uh, we, we had a, a state audit, uh, published in, in the spring of twenty twenty-one. Um, and, and that audit actually reflected a period actually prior to the spring of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, and, and discussed many of the, uh, kind of early stumbles that Calbright had. Um, and, uh, most of which under pre- previous leadership and, uh, you know, the steps that we needed to take to, uh, move forward in our growth over our startup period, um, which we're about halfway through at this point. Um, and so there were, uh, host recommendations, uh, ten, ten recommendations, uh, and Calbright accepted every single one of them. And we have been working hard to, uh, you know, implement all of them in, uh, in a prescribed timeline. Um, and so at this point, uh, where we are is that we expect all but one to be completed by the end of this fiscal year, which is the same as the academic year at a traditional institution. The exception is there's an, uh, one of the recommendations says that we need to award, uh, credit for prior learning, which we can't do until we are in a post-accreditation environment. But what I would say is that in the interim, we've established a couple of things. For example, we have created a, uh, like petition for someone to move into the cybersecurity program, which has prerequisites. And I would also say that competency-based model unto itself recognizes prior learning, um, through the model. Um, it's just that we can't do it in a formal credit process yet. Um, and so as part of this, there's two recommendations in the audit that were connected. Recommendations two and recommendation six. Um, and the recommendation two said, you need to have an implementation plan. How are you, how are you going to grow this college over your startup period? And then recommendation six was, and, and what, what is the budget? What is the spending plan associated with that implementation plan? Um, and so many of these things have required multiple years. Uh, and so the, this presentation itself is an update on the implementation plan, the spending plan, which is also reflected in our budget every, uh, you know, e- every year. So, um, many of these things had requirements where they said, okay, you need to create the plan and then you need to have the plan in existence for a year. And then you need to update the plan. And so they weren't things that you could just accomplish in a defined timeline, unfortunately. Um, and so we have been working hard to keep, keep going with all of those. Um, so if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, so as President Costa mentioned earlier, uh, today is, and, and President Menon said, so we're a different institution today than we were when the audit came out in the spring of twenty twenty-one. All of the things that we have implemented in the last eighteen months, in the last two years are really, we're seeing them come to fruition, right? And this is the, the product of just, just quiet determination every day. We, we've been working hard. Um, and, and so one of the things we see is, is enrollment growth. Um, at the start of the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, uh, we had four hundred eighty-one students. And today, we're actually, um, in the, uh, you know, twenty-six hundred range, and we're growing about seven to eight percent every month, which is a really good, really good growth. But I would also say we're growing in an intentional manner. What we're not, what we've learned here is that we can, we can grow enrollment, that our model is desirable to our students and, and they're, they're prioritizing our model when they're thinking about enrolling a higher education. But we, we are, you know, a- as we move through the accreditation process, we, we want to stabilize there and have a consistent growth model. So that in a post-accreditation environment, we, we can continue to scale. Um, and so across the state, um, our students come from just about every county in California. I'm trying hard to get all fifty-eight in. Um, and, and it's gonna, I'm getting there, uh, but, uh, you know, forty-seven out of fifty-eight counties. And I would say, um, you know, while enrollment growth is great, uh, especially in this environment where the community college is, you know, is, is barely, is just stabilizing at this point now. But who enrolls is, I think, eh, more critical. Um, and so if you go to the next slide, please. So our students, nine in ten, more than nine in ten are twenty-five plus years old. Um, and that is, I, I think, really, you know, uh, one, our legislative mandate. But two, um, you know, a, a, a reflection of, of how we're talking about Calbright and, and the groups that we're working with, uh, as, as we see enrollment grow. Um, our, uh, students, a third of our students are parents caregivers. That's triple the system-wide, uh, rates. Um, and, and something that we, we hear over and over is that our flexible, uh, online model is, is really desirable for a parent. I, I have a two-year-old and a four-month-old. And I, I can certainly say flexibility is, is, uh, desirable. Um, so, and then more than seventy percent of our student body, uh, i- is a member of the BIPOC community. Twenty-two percent are black, I think, across the system wide. It's about six percent. Um, seventeen percent are, are Asian, uh, thirty-six percent are Hispanic. So we're really touching every part of California and also, you know, twenty-seven of our, uh, counties are, twenty-seven of California's four, forty rural counties are represented in our student body. Um, and I would say when you, when you look at kind of where our students come from across the state, it's about twenty-five percent are in LA County, which LA County is about twenty-five percent of, of the state. So that makes sense. And then you get into about sixteen percent are in the inland empire, about thirteen percent are in the central valley. Uh, and then about eight percent are in Sacramento County itself. Um, so really seeing a lot of, uh, demographic diversity in our student body, but also focus on what our core regions are, the inland empire, the central valley communities that, uh, you know, have not rebounded, um, I haven't had the same opportunities in a post, uh, I wouldn't say post-pandemic environment at this point here, but as, as the economy's recovered out, out of, uh, the pandemic. Um, and then we're also seeing our, uh, completion rates, uh, grow, uh, and, and our, our raw numbers completers grow at, at a pretty good pace. In, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, sorry, we had about a hundred and ten completions. Right now, we're on pace to, uh, more than double that than, in this current academic year. So, or current, uh, calendar year, I should say. So, um, really seeing growth here. And I see on this chart here, it's just, this is a real-time chart and, and it's reflective of, of a, a couple of weeks ago. So we, we've seen, we continue to see, uh, kind of that consistent, uh, completion numbers, uh, increase. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, please. So the implementation and spending plan, um, as I mentioned, it was, it was developed in, in response to our auto recommendations. And it's, it's a planning, they're planning documents. They are continually reassessed and, and we continue to look at it, what, what are the changing dynamics of, of the, the, the environment? How, how are we growing? Are there areas that we need to focus? Prioritize, deprioritize. And so it's really a living, breathing, uh, plan. Um, but, uh, you know, really kind of a, at the highest level reflects where, where are we going over the course of our seven-year startup period? Um, and, and we will continue to reevaluate it as, for example, we have our new strategic vision that, you know, that will require, uh, you know, continued readjustments. Um, and so, but it dives into every part of what, uh, Calbright does. HR policies, partnerships, tech infrastructure, um, our program developments, R and D, which is a, a, a core area of, of our growth. Um, and, and the student experience. Um, and so if you go to the next slide, please. Okay, this is a chaotic, uh, slide, uh, by design. Um, and that is, this is just a, a sampling. I, I pulled out, I'd say about eighty percent of, of the kind of key tasks that are in our implementation plan and the progress we've made against a lot of them. Um, and so we, uh, you can see by the green check marks is that we've, we've been busy. Um, you know, we've from developing an EEO plan and then aligning how we hire, uh, to, to meet state requirements and community college policies and practices. Um, you know, creating a procurement policy, uh, and, um, you know, enabling tracking of student progress and engagement with Calbright so that we know where students are within the student journey and then can support them. Um, we launched a CRM program during this period. We launched a data analysis pilot program. Uh, we're in the process of designing and validating sixteen programs. I think we have a couple coming to the board next month. Um, and, and that will complete that, uh, aspect of it. Um, as I mentioned, we've grown enrollment and seventy-five percent of our students from our target populations was our goal, and we're certainly hitting that. Um, you know, accelerating completion. And then I wanted to, uh, talk a little bit more about one, one of the last bullets is, is renovate the website. Um, and I want to ta- pause on that because today is the one-year anniversary of when we launched our website, which this board approved, uh, my team to take on that project, uh, last, you know, early twenty twenty-two. Um, and so where we are with that, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, so a- as part of this, it was, what, what it really was is fundamentally a reorientation of how we talk about Calbright. Um, and a reorientation towards this, talking to the students and the student experience and the student journey. Um, and so our, our old website was really, uh, I mean, it was a little clunky, but it also didn't reflect what Calbright is. Um, and so, you know, really took to heart this focus on the students and their needs. And we talked to every single part of the college. I remember, I think, Member Grande, you, you said, are faculty going to be part of this? Are students going to be part of this? The emphatic answer is yes. We had focus groups, we did all-hands meetings, we talked to small teams, large teams, everyone across the college, current students, alumni as part of this whole process. And what, what you have i- is also a, a final product that reflects the whole college. Um, and so I would say that we've, uh, reimagined the digital experience um, i- in an effort to remove the hurdles associated with becoming a Calbright student. And by doing so, you're also creating early success for the students so that they feel empowered, they feel ready to go. Um, you know, I say all of that, CCC applies still a challenge, especially if you're doing it on your phone or something like that. Seventy percent of our website traffic comes via mobile. So it's really important that we had an adjustment there to, uh, design for mobile. Um, and then you can see on the right of the slide is some of our, our new, um, advertising, ties and so we're running. Really kind of getting to the core of what we are, is that we're, we're a different kind of college, um, you know, and, and these ads, um, you reflect the copy that is on our website, which, um, for anyone in the marketing world knows is critical. You need to have your ads and your website running together so that, uh, they're the most efficient as possible. Um, so you're the next slide, please. So this, this here is just two images, uh, one, on the left is our, our old website and on the right is our new website. Um, and, and I think you can, you can see the one on the right is, is approachable. We say you over and over again because we're talking to the student. We, we made that institutional decision that our website was going to be student-focused. Um, and, and that's really at the core. There's a re- reevaluation of, of just what, what our core message and core communication strategy is. Um, so you go to the next slide, please. And then as part of that is that, how do we, how do we create organic content? Because as an institution that's three years old, as I said, there's, there's not a lot of like foundational documentation. Right? There's not, who is Calbright? What do we do? What are our programs? Every time we do something at Calbright, we're doing it for the first time and it's new. Um, and so we, we need to write about those things, about these milestones, about enrollment growth, new programs launching, new partnerships. Um, you know, a- and then also create the environment in which other people who, you know, reporters and such are, that are paying attention to what we're doing, have that information available to them. And I think we saw a lot of that over the last couple of months with a lot of the press that we've been receiving is that it's not just that things suddenly got, you know, changed one day. It's that it was a, a methodical process in which we're laying the foundation here. Um, and so one of the things that I've been really proud of is that we've been building a lot of student profiles. Um, we have been really kind of reorienting our, our, um, contents to highlight the, the people and a- at Calbright, the students, faculty, staff, um, a- as well as our, our unique model. Um, if you go to the next slide, please.
See, before we go to results, uh, I'm going to interject on, on one point, which is, um, I think for many of us who have interacted with a lot of different types of websites, usually they are often used as a repository for information, right? In the, in the early days in the origin, I'm, I had information that was written down and now I'm putting it out online. And to move from just a communication instrument to tool or just a compliance tool, I have many requirements to meet. I'm going to put them all on the website and, and those have been met. This is a new way of interacting with our students and it's not just a communication exercise. It's an engagement exercise. And I, I think it's evident when you see what we're doing, but, but the importance of what it is and sort of what it means in towards, in terms of supporting, not just the initial connection with our student, but their relationship and navigation with us and through our institution. That's what this website is about. So often we get asked this question and, and a number of our sister colleges and other parts of higher education. Uh, how are you doing good things on enrollment? And, and, you know, can, you know, you're, you're, you redesigned your website. Do you want to optimize your website? These kinds of questions. Um, but sometimes the point that gets missed in, in it is not just the intention and the strategy behind why we did this or why it was important. But it was the realization and the revelation that every interaction as an institution that we have has to be oriented around that relational piece with the primary people that we are here, here, here to serve, and that is our current and prospective student body. Um, so I, I wanted to pause there because I, I sometimes think website redesign may not be exciting in and of itself. Um, but this is a, a milestone of significance in the model and the, the change that we're trying to build um, in the way that institutions interact with students.
It's more interesting than the audit findings, although audit findings are very important. I would that, or remember, listen.
I, I would just get a comment that, um, I'm really intrigued by this because brick and mortar campuses have a real hard time communicating with students, even though they're on the campus. And just trying to figure out why, how this works and what, what lessons have learned for those brick and mortar campuses that are still struggling. And I don't mean just community colleges. I mean, like the entire system. How do you, I get that all the time. How do you reach students? How do you get them to respond? And it's tough because there is not one modality that they use to communicate with us. So this is fascinating to me. I really want to learn more about it as we go on, go along. Thank you.
Or my brains. I think this is a, a good time to interject. Um, because you already know, I ask you every month what the, what the enrollments are. And, um, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, um, relative to the twenty-two percent African-descended student, uh, population, adult learner population. Um, I, I may be wrong, um, but I'm not wrong about California. Um, because we don't have a historically black college. Okay? That, um, that number is exponentially all by itself here in California. That we have that many enrollments, um, um, relative. It's almost a quarter of the population over time. Um, and so I'm hopefully, there's a couple of things. One, that, that those messages are landing um, for that population beyond the five to six percent. There are colleges, community colleges that have nine percent. There may be some, a couple of colleges um, that have ten percent or the district does. But twenty-two percent, the messages and what is happening is landing differently. It would be very helpful, um, to know how it's landing, why it's landing. And then um, a- as a part, monitoring those completions. Because at the end of the day, it really, it's about the completion rates. And so I know we haven't had enough data relative to that. I will keep bothering you about that, but, um, but that's, for me, that's, that's the key. This is an environment, not just in California, but across the country in which we are losing on a daily basis. Uh, black males in particular, but African-descended folks in the educational spaces. And so, um, what we have here is an opportunity. And so, um, what we have here is an opportunity, um, and I am very excited about it, but we have an opportunity to change that trajectory if we can figure out what, what is in that suit.
I, I, I'd love to pick that up for a second because, um, I think what we've learned is it's not a, a single shot communication, right? It's not just the words that we're using, but it's the act of the relationship we're building. And, and by that, I mean, that first touch and experience and support through the application process. Uh, that's the first moment of trust, right? I'm gonna, you're about to do something, it's going to be hard. We're going to help you through it. Um, that engagement, that, that's the first thing. Then they, there has to be an experience of value that is valued not by our assumption of what is valuable to the student, but from the perspective of the student itself. And I would say like, some of our proudest moments have been when we hear things from our students that sound like this. They say, um, I, I got a, a call. I, I was off for a couple of days and I got a text. I gotta, you know, when they actually validate the things that I'm telling you about, uh, what we are aiming to achieve with our model and they're feeling it, they're experiencing it, and they are drawing and deriving value from the engagement. And, and that is the part I think we often miss when we bifurcate the conversation on recruitment and enrollment from the conversation around reform, model change, intervention design, new ways of doing things. And, and it has to be that continuum. And I think tha- that's the real lesson that often we don't get to have. Uh, because we focused on it in it, we focused on the problem itself in a siloed way.
What I, what I would say is that then, then that population of student, adult learner appreciates that a lot more than, than others.
Yes.
That, that, that is, that they place a high value on that piece because those numbers are exponentially bigger than the, the regular population.
Yeah.
Um, I was just going to say what I think is really interesting, and I think it's the wave of the future in education actually is that to your point, most of the times communications are institutionally need driven. I need you to sign up because I need to know how to staff. I need you to pay so that I know how many books to order, et cetera. What's really interesting here is it's really more student centered, um, beyond just what the academic institution needs. Um, and so I do think we're charting a really amazing course here. Um, that will probably become a model, uh, for many other higher education institutions.
No, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, you know, to, to touch on a couple of points here is that, um, I want to talk about our website. One, it's, it's our annual, one year anniversary and that, that's exciting and it's effective. But, but also the, it's, it's reflective of how we as a college operate. And that thi- this is just a manifestation of what happens behind the scenes every day at Calbright. Um, and so, you know, I, I think that it's truly reflective and, and, you know, remember Haynes to your, to your point. Yeah, I mean, nine to ten of our students cite our model, what is the reason that they're, they're enrolling. And you'd think, you know, being free, you'd think that the majority would say, yes, it's because you're free. And, and they do. It's about sixty percent say that. But, I mean, that's a thirty percent difference, sixty, ninety on, um, you know, you know, the, the value of Calbright's model as the reason the program is accessible. And, and I think there's something to be said for that. Um, you know, I'll also say to, to President Bennett's point, um, the website can be multiple things so long as you agree and decide institutionally on, on what's, what you want it to feel like. And so it can be a place where kind of these core, like our budget summary sits on our website and a variety of other, you know, institutional documents sit there. But, but they don't need to, believe it or not, most people that are going to our website are not looking for our budget. They're, they're looking, interested in enrolling and, and, uh, they're interested in learning more about our programs. And, and so we, what we wanted to do was create something that reflected that and, and really the, 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 the spirit of why people are finding us. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. So just in terms of results, uh, member Epstein, uh, something you've, you've asked me quite a few times about is SEO. And, and how, what our, our organic traffic looks like and, and how all of that plays on one another. And so this chart is, what it shows is the number of organic, uh, visitors that we get. And organic is a fancy word to say is someone that typed in calbright.org or Googled calbright.org or Calbright and, and came to us naturally. They clicked the link on our website or something like that. Um, and, and what this shows is, it is actually, we, we have figures for April now at this point. Um, and, and those numbers about fifty-five hundred. So what we've done is more than doubled our organic traffic over the last year. And we've done so in an environment where, you know, we, we've launched a data analysis pilot program, but we haven't launched any, any new programs and that's, that's coming. So, so all of this is just efficiency. Um, and in creating content that reflects our ads, that reflects how people are finding Calbright and, and creating more efficiency that way. Um, and it's been really effective. Um, and, uh, and we expect that to continue as the college continues to grow here and new programs come available so that we're, you know, uh, were of interest to a larger portion of students. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. And then here's kind of the nuts and bolts of it is that when we look at the tactical, um, you know, how many keywords are we, are we ranking? Um, how are we doing in that? As you can see, last year, we, we, uh, around this time, we, we were ranked fourteen keywords, things related to Calbright were, uh, you know, coming up in the top twenty results. And that's important because that's really like the first page of people. Um, today we're twenty-eight, so it's, it's gone up. Uh, you know, you've seen some, some peaks here and valleys, but, um, you know, what we want to see is consistent growth. And, and that's reflective of the new, new content that we're creating. Um, and, and how we talk about the college. Oftentimes what you'll see and why you see kind of a, a month, a month spike or changes, some, something happened nationally or in the state. And so people are looking for something and, and it just happens that one of our pieces of content, um, connects to that. That's also what we're paying attention to is how are we writing about the Calbright so that, um, when these national trends align, we, we, we have a, a voice in the conversation. Um, so if you go to the next slide, please. Um, I would say ultimately, what we're doing is talking about our students. Um, and so this is just three examples. Alana Williams, Ivana. Um, Alana is actually, uh, one of our earliest alumni success stories. And I just want to give an update is that she came to, she moved to California, lived in North Hollywood and, um, didn't have the money to go back to college. Um, and so she enrolled at Calbright to get her, uh, comp T A certificate. Um, and she was able to leverage that into a job in an IT, um, company that, uh, and, and now she actually, she got a promotion, um, after she finished her comp T A certificate. And actually just got her second promotion, uh, a couple of months ago and is opening a new, uh, new branch for her company. Um, so really an exciting, you know, growth, growth story for us. Uh, Williams, another student, came to Calbright. He, um, you know, needed something to gain that, but, you know, the first step into the industry. Um, and so he got our, our cybersecurity cert. And, and while he was doing that, he, um, you know, got a job, uh, working in cloud systems. And so that's another just entry. And then Van is a current student, um, and she, you know, worked at Starbucks for fifteen years and was tired of the food industry. And that's something that we hear a lot, you know, the, the pandemic was, was not kind to the food industry and the service industry. Um, and, and so she, she came to us, you know, in, in search of, of a new opportunity. Um, so next slide, please. And so this is my last slide here, but what this is, is this is a picture of our, uh, Bitwise apprenticeship launch. Um, in Oakland, we did a couple of weeks ago, and these are all of our apprentices. Uh, we have nine of them starting in Oakland, uh, right now. And these are full-time, full, you know, paid for, for the full year apprentice, um, programs. And, um, you know, really, I, I, I think that this, this picture reflects kind of what, what the future of the workforce of California looks like. Um, and so it's very exciting. Um, so with that, I will stop talking. Uh, if you have any questions.
Thanks. I have one thing I'll highlight in that photo is how many amazing women in technology are represented. Uh, women of color in technology in particular. It's very exciting.
Season hand raised. I have Epstein, Rawlings, and then Medina Williams, you wanted? All right.
So first of all, Brendan, I just want to congratulate you on, uh, the, you and your team on the tremendous success you've had in getting media coverage, uh, positive media coverage of right in the last month or two. I mean, it's really gratifying after a few years of not so great media coverage, um, and, uh, and well deserved. Um, yeah, I just want to take a second to spike the ball a little bit. I had to go in and testify when the, uh, when the bill or when the proposal to audit Calbright, uh, came up. They gave me about one minute to explain that we'd only been in operations for seven months and spent about three million dollars and seemed a little premature to do an audit that was going to take nine months. Um, but, um, I'm so delighted that, that we're, uh, you know, hitting all the, the markers. I think in some weird ways, it was probably good for us because it really, you know, set goals that we had to fulfill and, and fact that, you know, you and the team, uh, have done it is, is just remarkable and, and gratifying. And, uh, and the fact that the, uh, the number of students has gone up, I think at one hundred and thirty-six percent in the last twelve months. It's pretty, let's keep that up. That's, that's a great, uh, that's a great plan. So anyhow, that's all I'm going to say. And, uh, I'm very delighted to also know that the, uh, author of the, uh, of the audit request is now safely retired at his home, no longer in the legislature.
Thank, thank you.
So al- also congratulations. Um, so having been around since the start, uh, one of the things I noted, uh, was both the progress on the audit findings and, and the great work there. And I know, uh, how, uh, heart wrenching some of the work was in, in trying to move it forward. Um, but I also noted that as we had talked, oh, I, I don't even remember, but more than a year ago about the website redesign and a change in approach. And I've seen that through both everything on the website, everything here. But also as I've seen the ads come up occasionally on, on my social media. Um, and I fit the target audience for, except for, uh, maybe, uh, location, ethnicity. But, uh, but I am one of those that was, was in that, uh, that lost group where my degree attainment wasn't enough to advance me, right? So, uh, the fact that I'm, I'm seeing these ads popping up and I know I'm at the edge of the target audience is, is reassuring that we're doing the right thing. And I hadn't seen it necessarily before. So what we're doing is, is right. One of the things that I do have a question about is I, I saw the reference here to CCC apply and how it remains a challenge. And my assumption is that it is not as mobile friendly as we need it to be. Uh, are there other challenges beyond that that we need to be paying attention to?
Yeah, I mean, so I do want to give credit to the, to the, um, you know, Chancellor's Office and everything in that they, they did a, a revamp of CCC apply a couple, uh, actually sometime in the last year. Um, and, uh, it is significantly more mobile friendly. But what, what I would say is that there are a couple of things that we think about, how, how could we create a better experience? One of the things that we do on our website is when someone comes to us and they're, they're going to apply, we, we actually have them fill out a, uh, you know, some of their information, your email address, those kinds of things. That's actually a typical in the community college system. Mo- most just push the students to CCC apply. So we're collecting that information ahead of time. Which means that if a student doesn't move through, we can, you know, do email marketing, we can connect with them that way. So, so what we're doing is kind of taking that onto ourselves. Um, you know, but then, for example, you fill out that, that information about who you are. It doesn't auto feed into CCC apply and, and knock out the first ten fields for you or anything like that. So, so there's that. And also I would say just, it is a hundred and forty field thing that is tough to do on, on your phone, right? Just, just by nature of what it is. There's a lot of questions in there and it can be intimidating. It takes, you know, fifteen minutes or so. Um, you know, so one of the things that we do is we try and really prepare students, you know, that you can fill out and kind of move through a couple of steps on our website. And it, and it, and it warms them up to this idea of, okay, you are getting ready now to, to leave the Calbright environment and go into this new environment, CCC apply. And we're finding that, that that kind of warm touch is, is helpful and effective. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that there, there, as we, as we continue to grow and continue to develop and continue to rethink, you know, what an application could look like. Um, you know, there, there's some information in there that probably we don't need or, you know, or, or areas that we'd like to dive into further, those kinds of things. So I would say we're, we're definitely seeing improvement. But I do think that on, on our side, we're, we're doing a lot of nurturing to kind of help push through that process too.
Medina and then Williams and then.
Uh, I just want to commend you because clearly obviously with the rise in enrollment, I mean, there's a correlation between social media and website. I personally on Instagram follow Calbright College and I have the opportunity to see the stories, the testimonials for that. And I'm really excited about that. I had another question. I'm, I'll see the picture we saw with the Bitwise interns. They're all alumnus of this college. So I'm really happy for that. But, um, moving forward, you know, just keep up the great work. I look forward to seeing president on social media.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I, I want to appreciate member of Epstein for bringing up the audit because it felt like it's a major milestone. And I almost felt like we should have had cake or something here today. I know it's still more work to do, but it's a major distraction that's been removed. And so like, I'm excited to see with what taking that away will bring, you know, given the chance to refocus and just kind of really focus on building the college. Um, I want to say I do appreciate seeing Calbright out at the LA County Fair with the booths. And, um, there were several, um, staff members there, just really, one guy got up and preached for about fifteen minutes about how great Calbright was. I think he was like an outreach person or something like that. And, you know, he was really promoting the, um, the college. And so, um, one of the things that I never noticed that's different about our trustee roles and responsibilities. And then, you know, my local district, our job description at the local district says that we promote. And, um, you know, we, we get out there and promote the college. Um, we were out at dinner last night and Hildy saw all of the member, um, Aguanado saw all of the high school students and she was trying to get us to go out and do some outreach while we were sitting there. And it might be something that we should look at is updating the trustee job description for this group. Because I think the governor's did, office did a really good job with geographically, um, distributing who the trustees are and what role can we play in helping with getting out into these communities, whether it be through relationships or just even on our social media. And I know some people do, um, promote, but you know, if you think about the long term, um, stability of the organization, that could be something that's placed in the job description of the trustees. This, it's not quite in there as strong as, um, it is in our local job description. Um, so I, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks. We have Aguanaldo and then Grande.
Well, on a member Williams's note, congratulations to that graduating high school class. If we had a tablecloth, we absolutely would have tabled. Um, I just wanted to, uh, push on a sore spot for you. Um, forty-seven out of fifty-eight counties, that is a deficiency of fif- of eleven county. Um, but if I were to draw a gradient map, uh, and just guess the counties that we were able to outreach successfully in, it would probably be pretty similar to this. This looks pretty consistent with other gradient maps we've seen. Can you just talk a little bit more about how you're rethinking engagement and outreach in those eleven counties? And when you would expect to see more success there?
Yeah, great question. Um, so there's a, a couple of things. One, I would say the, the highest level, the many of the counties that don't have enrollment at Calbright are, um, very low population, uh, counties. That, that does not mean, um, that, uh, we're not going to outreach to them. But, but I would say is that, um, there, it's, it's a more difficult to reach, you know, community. And so we need to focus more on that. Um, so for example, uh, my outreach coordinator on my team on Friday was at the uh, Suboba Native American Indian Reservation, Native American Reservation, uh, and, and at, at a community services event, um, talking about tho- those are the kinds of places that we want to go. Because every time we go to one of those events, five or six new opportunities come back to us. Um, how can we think about what kind of, you, you know, ou- outreach events are happening in those areas? And then what are the nonprofit organizations that are serving those same community of learners that we can engage with? Um, thinking about, you know, for example, the, the, the North State and, um, kind of those, those regions, you know, Susanville and such is what's, um, you know, what, what are the job opportunities out there? And, and how can we align? How can we, um, maybe fi- find some of our current students that are, that are from there and amplify who they are um, in, into those communities? Um, and then also I would say, uh, one of the things we're working on is, um, Chamber of Commerce, uh, engagement. And that's, that's really, uh, you know, Jenny Johnson's area, but I'm, I'm tangential to it. Um, and, and thinking through what are those chambers and, and how are they working with their communities? And how can we, how can we weave ourselves into that further? Um, you know, and we're seeing that a little bit with, I mean, Bitwise is not a Chamber of Commerce entity, but, you know, wh- those, those community engagement opportunities are arising. Um, you know, I'd also say a big priority has been quieting the noise around right too. And that's been, you know, an area of focus for us over the last two years is there's, there's been a lot of negative, um, you know, press and such about Calbright. And so, so we've been growing in a, you know, in a, a negative news cycle, um, which is, which is difficult to do. And so, you know, we're seeing that kind of quiet here. Um, so, you know, looking forward is, is can we do more geographic targeting? Can we think about, you know, for example, if we're going to outreach to, um, you know, military veterans? Can we do, can we think about geographic targeting of Oceanside, California or, you know, those kinds of areas? How can we, how can we think about those things? Um, and so that's certainly our plan kind of for the next fiscal year as well as, you know, into the future. And it's an indefinite area, um, of focus for us. Um, to keep, you know, have that be a priority. Cause I, I'd love to see fifty-eight, um, counties represented.
I have Grande, then Salas, and then, uh, Brown, and then Medina.
Thank you. Member Williams mentioned where my comment was going to go because of what Hildy had pointed.
Member Williams mentioned where my comment was going to go because of what Hildy had pointed out. As we're sitting there at dinner last night, seeing the celebration that is also common this time of year and looking at the component parts of our website, meet Esha, the Calbright graduate, meet Paige, the Calbright graduate. At what point in time are we going to bring these two hundred plus certificate earners together to recognize this momentous accomplishment and to celebrate and use all of the publicity that indicates Calbright is a college and we have completers? When is that in the timeline?
Well, yeah, uh, that that's a no, it's a fantastic question and a fantastic point. Um, so I I think, I mean, one, the the first step has been just just meeting these students and understanding who they are, you know, and talking to them. That's a that's a, you know, website that you're referencing. It it had, you know, I would say two to three student profiles on it a year ago. So we are actively working on that. Um, you know, but to to the bigger point of how can we create more opportunities to meet with our students? Um, you know, Jeremy Cox, our student body president, has been doing, you know, media interviews and such with us recently and has he's been at these meetings. So I I think that we're starting to see that and starting to see that formalize with with the creation of a student body organization, which which we didn't have a year ago. Uh, these are all new things for us. And so, yeah, how how can we, um, you know, bring bring students, um, you know, in districts to meet with, uh, you know, lawmakers? How can we bring students to meet with, um, you know, C B Os to, uh, uh, you know, ta- talk about student experience? And, um, yeah, how how can we at the highest level, um, you know, recognize their work? One of the things that my team wants to do is follow, for example, our Bitwise apprentices. We want to follow them over the course of the next year and and learn from them, one, about what they're doing and how they've been successful. But two, to use their stories to to show that this entry point is accessible for Californians across the state. Um, you know, and telling their stories create that at this point. Um, so I I'm I'm going to have to, um, punt a little bit on your big question of what when do all two hundred and and fifty come together for one collective gathering? I don't have an answer for that.
You know, the board just wants cake. Let's be honest, but that's the theme here.
Um, I I'm sure there's a way for us to think about it, a a virtual celebration of short. And I've seen some other institutions do some interesting stuff in that regard. But I actually wanted to take a step back, which is before graduation, right? For us, what's most important is the community that we're building with our students at Cal right. And I highlight that point because the celebration is ongoing. It's in their milestone achievements, not just their summit of achievement and completion. That relationship continues on. And ultimately, if you ask Jeremy Cox, our student body president, how he heard about Cal bright, it was from another parent on the on the playground while he was tending to his three kids, uh, at home. And so I I I point out this because there's a lot more, um, organic celebration that happens, uh, largely because our model is getting better. Our the outcomes of our students are getting better. Their experience and the community that they're building with one another at Cal bright is getting more robust. And and ultimately, um, that that that's the thing that they're most excited about celebrating, right? They're building a career network for them for themselves. We are supporting that. We also will stay in touch with them. They will be the ones to go on and, um, you know, promote Cal bright, celebrate their accomplishments and, uh, bring more folks in the community into the fold of the opportunity. And so I I do think, uh, not that I don't, uh, appreciate the moments to celebrate, but I I do think we are seeing that, uh, in the very intentional ways in which we're creating a community around these learners.
Can I add something? Because I think it's, um.
You're out of order, but, oh, oh, no, yeah.
Uh, I'm out of order.
Yeah, well, we'll add you to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, member Salas is next.
Thank you very much. And, um, congratulations. I mean, I'm as a new board member, I'm really excited to see the significant progress that you've made. And I want to go back to some of your earlier remarks. Um, you said that there's seventy percent that sign in on a mobile device?
Uh, that that come to our website, our website traffic is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's not a hundred percent of our students are mobile, but our traffic.
Yeah, okay. So the but the the question was that, um, when you have your application, when you your initial application, is there an area there where you can ask the question? Are you connected to internet? And if not, why not? Uh, and the reason that I ask is, um, when we were going through the pandemic and I was the mayor of my city, um, what the city did is we had a one to one match with Cox Communication. And what we did is we were able to give, um, two thousand hotspots to to, uh, the school district. And then the school district distributed to the most needy students. So if it's that that's stopping anyone, because to try to do something online to complete a coursework online, if you're only using a mobile, I think is real difficult. And that may be a barrier to get them to sign up because they don't have that access.
Yeah, I is so, um, it's a great point. And so C C C apply itself is not run by Cal right. But, um, and so and so we we have limited control over the content there. But what we do have is a lending library, we provide Chromebooks and hotspots to every student who needs them. And and the uptake rate is is about fifty to sixty percent of our students. You have one or both devices. Um, but but you're right, that is the process of once they become students, those items are available to them. Um, they have to complete the application, uh, uh, you know, by by theirs, by themselves, um, you know, with our support. Uh, and and we we certainly, we actually have one on one, um, application help where students says, I need need help with this. And we will schedule a meeting with them and actually walk them through it, um, you know, directly. Um, but, uh, yeah, so so really proud of our of our lending library. And and in fact, too, we're we're seeing that it's working across the state.
That's awesome. And that's a that's a great way to connect to the rural communities as well that have, you know, very spotty internet service.
Absolutely.
One other question that I had is I heard that you had a completion rate of about twenty percent. Is that, how is that compared to the regular Bricks and Marder Community College?
Uh, so on the completion rate, I think that we're still, um, pretty early in that process. So what I would say is that so our persistence rate, what we're seeing is from first term to second term, our persistence rate hovering around ninety four percent. That's very good. Um, and and then, you know, it's it's, uh, interesting because it's such a new institution. You know, getting a sample size that's large enough over a long enough or, you know, longitudinal period, um, you know, just takes time and 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 nothing else. So, um, we are seeing, so that persistence rate first term to second term is double the system wide rate for a dollar. So very good. Um, and then it, uh, continues on and and we're seeing kind of continual progress there. So that's, I'd say, the earliest, um, kind of success numbers that we're seeing. And then in terms of, you know, raw certificate numbers, we're seeing those increase, you know, quite a bit, doubling this year versus last year, which doubled over the previous year, doubling every year. Um, and 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 from a a graduation rate, I I think that it's it's getting better and growing kind of as all of these, um, all all the infrastructure that has been put in under new leadership, um, you know, our our student services, our instructors. Um, and and we're continuing to see that improve here. We're not quite at a point where we've had a long enough time time horizon to calculate a true reflective rate yet. But all of the earliest indicators, our persistence, our student engagement, all of these things are trending and and absolute fantastic is the, you know, direction.
Well, I would say you're doing the right things.
Thank you.
I'll I'll add one thing just to also clarify. I think, um, the rate for, uh, for adult students to complete any kind of credential, whether it's a degree or a certi- certificate, is actually in the single digits. That's true. In the California community colleges, it hovers around five or six percent similarly nationally. Um, and so when we take a step back and and think about how do we preserve what the model is built to do, which is ensure that students have flexibility in the timeframes to completion, while also holding us almost to account institutionally to make sure we're doing everything we can to support their progression. So so if we were to look in that time horizon window, we're already elipsing what has been the intractable rate uh, in terms of completion levels. But what we're looking at is is, you know, the next stage is also more nuanced. How can we understand not just the pace and progress numbers, but ultimately, based on a student's determined goal and time they have available? What is the, you know, what is the likelihood, uh, an appropriate timeframe for completion, right? So that's that's where we'll go next to be able to really have, uh, a lot more detail and context around completion rate numbers to reflect whether the institution is doing everything it can, um, to support students based on their goals and their timeframe.
Eleven minutes left for board member comments. I'm only the captain of the ship. When you disembark is up to you, trustee Brown.
Um, when I think about, uh, marketing, I I think about this interesting relationship our culture has with it. Um, I'm one of those people that I I'm not much into sports, but I do watch the Super Bowl commercials. Um, I think about, um, in L A County, um, growing up in the way back in the nineteen hundreds, there, um, were these commercials for Larry H. Parker and, uh, Jacobian Myers that are now quite famous, I think, nationwide on the internet. Um, to the point where now, uh, an institution which I consider an educational institution, Duolingo, has created a commercial that looks very similar to those old, um, eighties, seventies, nineties commercials, um, capturing on something that has gone viral. Um, so I just see a lot of potential, um, for Cal bright to do something similar, um, because you're Cal bright is in its own lane. Um, and and to become a name that people know and that they know what it means. Um, I think, and and to, I I mean, getting past, like you said, the negative press aspect of it. Um, and that people, because I don't think people see Duolingo as competition for our foreign language classes that are being offered, right? It's a different way. It's actually supporting, right? So I think that can happen and I see a lot of potential. So I I'd love to see, um, elements that I think about when I think about those old commercials are the testimonials. I'd love to see even more pushing that, um, but also innovation of the fun and the funny. I'd love to see something Cal bright related go viral. So, um, I hope that that's an aspiration that that we can all, um, hope to achieve because I think it'll help.
Or member Medina and Haynes.
Definitely. A lot of us to echo what the words in which trustee Brown, trustee Agonaldo said earlier, which is basically reevaluating really the marketing, because you brought up a very interesting point, actually, trustee Agonaldo, which is there's eleven counties that don't have a single student. Yet those counties are located in rural areas, which you mentioned, which is where we probably don't have a junior college, community college nearby. So if anything, that's where we really need help right college more than ever before. And also another point, if I'm not mistaken, ninety percent of the students are above twenty five years old, right? Now, we could still market towards under twenty, no, okay, it's twenty five and older.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
All right. So the stipulations for the college program are wrong, you have to be over twenty five, okay?
Yeah, well, so so any anyone who is eighteen eighteen or eighteen or older can enroll at Cal bright. Um, but but from our perspective, we we were designed to ser- serve adult learners in California. And so that is our legislative mandate is we really don't market anyone younger than twenty four. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, board member Williams and Haynes get special stars for deferring their comments that we can end on time. Um, we don't have any constituency group reports today in items, uh, six, uh, of the agenda. Uh, we're now at public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you so much. Then the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete and we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.